Good evening. Welcome to City Council Chamber. You know, usually the chamber is here for subcommittees and city council meetings, but tonight we are especially honored to have someone here, one of our veterans who has recently been honored, and he's here tonight to accept this. I just want to thank Eric Lamash, Veterans Coordinator for the City of Lowell. Eric, thank you very much for all your hard work and your service. And also joining me this evening, we have City Councilor Wes Nune, City Councilor Eric Etia, City Councilor Wayne Janess, and City Councilor Corey Belanger. I thank Councilor Janess for pausing his meeting for a few minutes, Mr. Peoples, so we can honor you here this evening. So I just wanted to make a citation to Michael Peoples. The City of Lowell is proud to recognize Michael, a U.S. Army veteran and lifelong resident, for his remarkable service to both the Lowell and veteran communities. Mr. Peoples honorably served in the 3rd Army Division of Germany under General Alexander Haig before returning to Lowell and dedicating himself to making a lasting impact within his city and community. After serving his nation, Mr. Peoples would work over 25 years as a materials manager at St. Memorial Medical Center at Elliott Hospital, earning a cum laude degree from UMass Lowell as well. While attending UMass Lowell, he was served as the founding president of the UMass Student and Veterans Organization, leading initiatives and events to support veterans, including fundraisers like "Support the Troops," "Trick or Treat for the Troops," and organizing the UMass Lowell Flag Raising Ceremony, which continues to this day. Over the years, Mr. Peoples has become a member of the Standing Committee on Veteran Affairs and has been recognized as who's who amongst students in American universities and colleges. His contributions earned him the UMass Lowell University Medal for Public Service, and his efforts has helped make UMass Lowell one of the nation's top 10 veteran-friendly universities. Now therefore, I may, Danny P. Roark, on behalf of the entire City Council, my colleagues here this evening, and the residents of Lowell hereby extend our deepest respect, gratitude, and best wishes to Michael Peoples for his continued promotion of patriotism and dedication to the veteran community, given his 8th day of April 2025.
Thank you. Special thanks to Veterans Commission of Lowell and to Veterans Representative Eric Lamash. I am proud to accept this honor, most of all, I am proud to have served my country in the United States Army 3rd Armored Division. Thank you Lowell and UMass Lowell for all you do and all you have done for veterans. I could not be prouder of my city and world-class university. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thanks. You're welcome. I'll take it. Very well. I'll take it. Thank you. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. On the show on room. Hey, at this time, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Lowell City Council Downtown and Economic Development Subcommittee. Mr. Clerk, would you please call for April 8, 2025? Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Counselors Janess.
Here.
Counselor Belanger.
Here.
Counselor Nune.
Here.
Three present.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Tonight on the agenda, we have one item, which is an update on the implementation of a downtown business improvement district. And to give that presentation, we have Ally Carter from the City's Department of Economic Development. Ms. Carter.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. So in the packet I've given you here, it's just a brief overview of the work we have done so far with the Downtown Lowell Bid Steering Committee. So the second page, you'll see there's a map of the proposed district, which is much of downtown. It's actually the version we're working with, just to be clear. The outline is the full census tract, but that's not it. It's the smaller section with the lines going through it. It's basically from Market Street to the river and up to the canal along Dutton Street. Then we have the property type, parcel type by land use, so large apartment buildings, think the market mills, boot mills. Then there's commercial properties, exempt and exempt government, those are owned by nonprofits, mixed use and vacant. We have kept small residential units like condos out of this calculation. That seems to be from other bids in Massachusetts, best practice. So there are a couple slides showing the total value. So to form a bid, you have to have 51% of the property owners, actually, excuse me, 60% of the property owners representing 51% of the value that have opted into the bids. There's two metrics that have to be met, so it's important to understand the value because the bid fee is a percentage of every property owner's property value. So a breakdown of the exempt parcels has been included as well, just to show that a large number of them are owned by the City of Lowell, 13, and then the state as well. And then there's a handful of other U.S. government, nonprofit, and religious institutions. So the Bid Steering Committee is made up of a group of volunteer property owners and business owners, sometimes both, in Downtown Lowell, and they have been going around socializing some of these numbers with property owners downtown, sort of saying, explaining what the bid is, explaining what it could do, and then saying, you know, if we went ahead with this, we are looking at you having to pay this amount of money, this percentage of your property value that would be a special assessment that would be used to fund the bid. And so far, we've gotten pretty positive feedback. We do have to think about adjusting for certain property types because for like a large residential property, the value goes very high very quickly compared to a smaller commercial property. So that is something that's still being negotiated. And then just a brief summary of a focus group effort we did last summer where we had six focus groups in the community, just to talk about if there were a bid in Downtown Lowell, what would you want it to do? And what do you think, what are the attractive qualities you find in other communities? Like what's a place you like to go? So that's the places that work slide. And then what's a place you like to go and what is it about those places that you like? So people sort of keyed in on walkability, a variety of businesses, and so on and so forth. And then we sort of triangulated to, okay, so what of those things do we have in Downtown Lowell? And the cultural diversity, the national park, the nonprofit ecosystem, arts and culture, the walkability, those all came up as assets. And then there were talks about concerns, which I think are pretty familiar to hear, uncommon in other places as well, but actually, walkability came up as a positive and a negative, which is interesting. So I guess it depends on who you ask. But more consistency in services, more consistency in programs, you know, limited inconsistent business hours, things like that. So then it got more to what would you like to see the bid do? And to be clear, the bid would be doing things that aren't city-provided services, but things that are above and beyond what the city does and is expected to do. So some of the ideas were about safety, having more consistent coordination of street activity, having ambassadors from the bid out on the street, in addition to police presence to help people out. Marketing was a big one, and more sort of beautification-type things. So some were in the realm of aesthetics, improving curb appeal, landscaping, flowers. And then there were programming ideas, quite a few of those, having more programs, more events, that the bid could provide beyond, you know, what the city's case department already does. And then that part of the marketing could be to other businesses that help property owners attract new businesses that would add to the mix and be complementary to the businesses downtown. So that is a very brief overview of about a year and a half worth of work, but I'm happy to, oh, next steps, we do need to finalize the boundaries, which we're pretty close to doing, finalize that bid improvement plan, that's, you know, what the city does and then what the bid would do with the funding, where the bid to be creative, develop the budget and the fee structure, and then we would have to create an MOU with the city that sort of spells out again what the city would do in this area and what the bid would do, and then launch a petition campaign where we're actually collecting signatures from property owners, which the Steering Committee would like to start doing this summer or fall. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ally. I appreciate the update. I would like to note that we're joined in the chamber by Counselors Corey Robinson and Paul Retaiem. Thank you for being here, guys. At this point, I'll open it up to my colleagues for any questions they may have. Councilor Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ally, thank you for coming in tonight. So this is all this information, this is approximately a year and a half in the making?
Yes.
Okay. So tell me about your outreach to the building owners, that's who this all comes down to that. What, if you put a percent, a number on the building owners you talked to, how has this been received, if you could?
Sure. So it's important to know that I'm not doing most of this work. It's the Volunteer Bid Steering Committee, who are downtown property owners themselves.
Okay.
And so many of them have said, we want in. This is not the first time Lowell's tried to start a bid, so it's been socialized a little bit already. So those folks have been reaching out to their peers and saying, hey, like, I'm interested in doing this. I think these are all the benefits we could have. And the Steering Committee has a spreadsheet with, that they're tracking their own outreach. So so far, they've reached out to enough folks who were comfortable with the idea to get to that 60% figure. So that's why we're thinking of starting, really collecting signatures this summer. Liam in my department is great with spreadsheets and numbers, and he's probably watching this and laughing now. So he's got this great spreadsheet where it's like anybody who says yes, we tag them, it changes the percentage, and we're keeping close track of that.
Okay, so you sound optimistic that we can get to that 60% threshold of building owners, if I may be so.
I do, yes. I think the key thing is that 51% of the value, and you have to meet both of those criteria, and so making sure that some of the larger property owners are on board is important, and we've started talking to them recently.
Okay, that sounds great. I'd like to see that process accelerated. In some way, I know the volunteers are doing the best we can, but maybe perhaps some more city involvement, then it gets very, now, do city officials at any point call building owners and talk to them, or is this all up to the committee?
Ultimately, the bid will be a nonprofit organization, an independent nonprofit separate from the city. So the work I have done is to apply for grants, get the bid committee together, work with a consultant that we got a grant from the state to work with, scheduling things. As time goes on, the idea is that the city has less and less responsibility and that the Bid Steering Committee becomes more and more independent toward being their own independent 501(c)(3) organization.
Okay. Excellent. And what's the approximate special assessment? What's the percentage there?
So the assessment, the figures in this presentation are actually a little bit dated because we just changed the numbers. So right now, the numbers that we're looking at are .035%, .35%.
Three-quarters of a 1%, yeah, okay.
Or .4%. So it's a very, very small number.
Very modest, yes.
But when you add that all up together, it ends up being close to $1 million. And so what's amazing about it is so far with the outreach, people have been like, oh, my portion is just this small. That's been the overwhelming feedback we've gotten, is that you're really only asking me to spend that much. That's, so it shows sort of the power of collectively pooling everyone's funds together.
No, I can see the buy-in there, right, with that small. That's, that sounds great. Okay. Well, I'm pleased the work that's been done. I'd really like to see this happen. I think we're ready. I think the landowners, we did attempt this back in 2016, give or take, and it did not, was not too well-received. But I think the environment and the climate has changed, and we need this. I think, you know, we've got a lot of new businesses coming in, most of which are not the property owners, but it's in the building owner's best interest to create the best environment for the tenants, to create this turnover that's been happening pretty frequently. So, great, so please keep the foot on the gas. Let's see this come into fruition. I'm very excited to see our downtown enhanced. Well, on our end, you know, we've been pushing for special events. We'll push, you know, they can count on some city investment as well. We want more bodies downtown. Simple, it's that simple. So, you know, they're gonna, we're gonna have commitment on our end as well for these property owners. So thank you very much, Ally, and Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you for that. I'd just like to give a few quick thoughts, which is just as a downtown resident who lives in the core of what this bid would be, I'm very excited to see this, and I think it will only improve things for residents and businesses alike, and the city as a whole. It will really uplift the whole downtown core, and I think it will, it will spur more growth and more investment from businesses, just having this existing and having these services being, being provided by the bid. So I'm really excited, and I want to thank you, Ally, for your work, and everyone on the Steering Committee for, for pitching in and trying to get this off the ground. As my colleague mentioned, I think things are different out there now than the last time this was attempted, and so I'm very optimistic as well. And if there's anything I can do to help, please call me. I'm happy to do it. Sorry I've missed a few Steering Committee meetings, but I'll do my best to get there. But thank you very much, and Counselor Nune.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, the last time was not successful because we didn't have Ally Carter, you know, so this time we have her. I know that at beginning, when we start meeting at Mike Gallagher's office, there was, you know, some, some hope, but, you know, we know we need to get, who we need to get, some of the property owners to be on our side. So soon as Ally came on, I know that, the funny part is that you think that Ally do all the work, but Ally actually got all this volunteer committee to do some of the work, and these property owners, and, you know, and this business owner, like Taddy Panel, is all in on this. Now, Lala Bookstore, just to name a few, and they're the one who go out there and reach out to other property owner and say, look, this is what the bid's gonna do. This is our money, this is how we're going to spend it. We have a committee to make a decision as to what to spend on, on top of what the cities work, and the city do their work. The city's not going to relinquish the work that it's supposed to do. In addition to what the city is doing, this is what the bid's going to be doing for the beautification, for marketing, for so many other things. And the, the other things that I'm happy to see as well, the administration, especially this city manager, actually, you know, put forth, say, look, we're going to put, we're gonna, you know, put in our part to help. So you're gonna see the MOU that's going to be reflective of the partnership between the city and the bid committee, you know, going forward. So I'm very happy, very excited to see that, you know, you're going to start doing signature collection, and at some point, you know, develop budget and fee structures, and I know that is, you know, I hope that it's going to get done by the end of the year, and that we can start this, and certainly, and Counselor Robinson, Counselor Belanger is correct that, I spoke also before tonight's meeting with Counselor Robinson as well, that if this, if and when this is successful, we can replicate it elsewhere in our city gateway, right? In, in, in Bridge Street, in Roger Street, at Westwood, and Mirsex, and so, in all our city. And so this is, this is very exciting news, particularly for the downtown, because this in combination with the vacancies ordinance is going to do a sustain, sustained development, sustained economic growth in, in the downtown. So really excited, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Counselor Roberts.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, bravo. I, I think this is a great idea. I think it's long overdue. I think this is a perfect example of looking at how do we move the city forward, as, as everyone's commented and spoken about, and taking this approach is pretty much allowing the businesses and the property owners downtown to kind of dial in, customize, and tailor the environment for what they know firsthand, their clientele, their, their neighbors, what, what the people actually utilizing this space want and need, and who better to kind of steer that, that car than those that are actually making
fall. So, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ali. I appreciate the update. I would like to note that we're joined in the chamber by Counselors Corey Robinson and Paul Retaiyem. Thank you for being here, guys. At this point, I'll open it up to my colleagues for any questions they may have. Counselor Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ali, thank you for coming in tonight. So, this is all this information, this is approximately a year and a half in the making?
Yes.
Okay. So, tell me about your outreach to the building owners, that's who this all comes down to that. If you put a percent, a number on the building owners you talk to, how has this been received? If you could.
Sure. So, it's important to know that I'm not doing most of this work. It's the volunteer bid steering committee, who are downtown property owners themselves.
Okay.
And so, many of them have said, we want in. This is not the first time Lowell's tried to start a bid, so it's been socialized a little bit already. So, those folks have been reaching out to their peers and saying, hey, like, I'm interested in doing this, I think these are all the benefits we could have. And the steering committee has a spreadsheet with, that they're tracking their own outreach. So, so far, they've reached out to enough folks who were comfortable with the idea to get to that 60% figure. So, that's why we're thinking of starting, really collecting signatures this summer. Liam in my department is great with spreadsheets and numbers, and he's probably watching this and laughing now. So, he's got this great spreadsheet where it's like anybody who says yes, we tag them, it changes the percentage, and we're keeping close track of that.
Okay. So, you sound optimistic that we can get to that 60% threshold of building owners, if I may be.
I do, yes. I think the key thing is that 51% of the value, and you have to meet both those criteria. And so, making sure that some of the larger property owners are on board is important, and we've started talking to them recently.
Okay. That sounds great. I'd like to see that process accelerated. In some way, I know the volunteers, and they're doing the best we can, but maybe perhaps some more city involvement. Then, it gets very, now, do city officials at any point call building owners and talk to them, or is this all up to the committee?
Ultimately, the bid will be a nonprofit organization, an independent nonprofit separate from the city. So, the work I have done is to apply for grants, get the bid committee together, work with a consultant that we got a grant from the state to work with, scheduling things. As time goes on, the idea is that the city has less and less responsibility, and that the bid steering committee becomes more and more independent toward being their own independent 501(c)(3) organization.
Okay. Excellent. And what's the approximate special assessment? What's the percentage there?
So, the assessment, their figures in this presentation are actually a little bit dated because we just changed the numbers. So, right now, the numbers that we're looking at are .035%, .35%.
Yep.
And.
Three-quarters of a 1%.
Yes.
Okay.
Or .4%.
Okay.
So, it's a very, very small number.
Very modest, yes.
But when you add that all up together, it ends up being close to a million dollars. And so, what's amazing about it is so far with the outreach, people have been like, oh, my portion is just this small. That's been the overwhelming feedback we've gotten, is that you're really only asking me to spend that much. That's, so it shows sort of the power of collectively pooling everyone's funds together.
No, I can see the buy-in there, right, with that small. That's, that sounds great. Okay. Well, I'm pleased the work that's been done. I'd really like to see this happen. I think we're ready. I think the landowners, we did attempt this back in 2016, give or take, and it did not, was not too well-received. But I think the environment and the climate has changed, and we need this. I think, you know, we've got a lot of new businesses coming in, most of which are not the property owners, but it's in the building owner's best interest to create the best environment for the tenants, to create this turnover that's been happening pretty frequently. So, great. So, please, keep the fun on the gas. Let's see this come into fruition. I'm very excited to see our downtown enhanced. Well, on our end, you know, we've been pushing for special events. We'll push, you know, they can count on some city investment as well. We want more bodies downtown. Simple, it's that simple. So, you know, we're going to have commitment on our end as well for these property owners. Thank you very much, Ali, and Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you for that. I'd just like to give a few quick thoughts, which is just, as a downtown resident who lives in the core of what this bid would be, I'm very excited to see this, and I think it will only improve things for residents and businesses alike, and the city as a whole. It will really uplift the whole downtown core, and I think it will, it will spur more growth and more investment from businesses, just having this existing and having these services being, being provided by the bid. So, I'm really excited, and I want to thank you, Ali, for your work, and everyone on the steering committee for pitching in and trying to get this off the ground. As my colleague mentioned, I think things are different out there now than the last time this was attempted, and so I'm very optimistic as well. And if there's anything I can do to help, please call me. I'm happy to do it. Sorry, I've missed a few steering committee meetings, but I'll do my best to get there. But thank you very much, and Counselor New.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, the last time was not successful because we didn't have Ali Carter. So, this time, we have her. I know that at beginning, when we start meeting at Mike Gallagher's office, there was, you know, some, some hope, but, you know, we know we need to get, who we need to get, some of the property owners to be on our side. So, soon as Ali came on, I know that, the funny part is that you think that Ali do all the work, but Ali actually got all this volunteer committee to do some of the work, and these property owners, and, you know, and this business owner, like Patty Panal, is all in on this, Lala Bookstore, just to name a few. And they're the one who go out there and reach out to other property owner and say, look, this is what the bid's going to do. This is our money, this is how we're going to spend it, we have a committee to make a decision as to what to spend on, on top of what the cities work. The city do their work. The city's not going to relinquish the work that it's supposed to do. In addition to what the city is doing, this is what the bid's going to be doing, for the beautification, for marketing, for so many other things. And the, the other things that I'm happy to see is, while the administration, especially this city manager, actually, you know, put forth, say, look, we're going to put, we're going to, you know, put in our part to help. So, you're going to see the MOU that's going to be reflective of the partnership between the city and the bid committee, you know, going forward. So, I'm very happy, very excited to see that, you know, you're going to start doing signature collection, at some point, develop budget and fee structures, and I know that is, you know, I hope that it's going to get done by the end of the year, and that we can start this, and certainly, and Counselor Robinson, Counselor Belanger is correct that, I spoke also before tonight's meeting with Counselor Robinson as well, that if this, even when this is successful, we can replicate it elsewhere in our city gateway, right? In Bridge Street, in Roger Street, at Westwood, and Mirsex, and so, in all our city. And so, this is, this is very exciting, new, particularly for the downtown, because this in combination with the vacancies ordinance, is going to do a sustain, sustained development, sustained economic growth in, in the downtown. So, really excited, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, bravo. I, I think this is a great idea. I think it's long overdue. I think this is a perfect example of looking at how do we move the city forward, as, as everyone's commented and spoken about, and taking this approach is pretty much allowing the businesses and the property owners downtown to kind of dial in, customize and tailor the environment for what they know firsthand, their clientele, their neighbors, what the people actually utilizing this space want and need, and who better to kind of steer that, that car than those that are actually making a living and functioning in this space? So, I think this is a great idea, kind of for everybody, guests and residents, by those that are dependent on those guests and residents. So, I think it's huge. Something that, so now, is this exclusive only to property owners that can opt in? Because one of the things that, that, listening to the conversation, is a lot of our businesses, they initially sign up for five-year leases, and so, if a property owner might not want to enter into that, is there a mechanism for that business owner that signed that five-year lease to opt in themselves? Because, I mean, we saw firsthand, the streeteries, the patio spaces took off, and, and mind you, I have not seen a property or, or business owner downtown that isn't thrilled. The new owner, or fairly new owners, that fuse, perfect example. I know they, they've been grinding it out through the winter months, and, and, you know, it's, it's tough to get, change menus and kind of get the lay of the land, so to say, but I've been reassuring Kevin and his team, like, you guys have one of the prime locations with this patio. Soon as the nice weather hits, you're going to see an influx of, of patrons. And so, I think this bid is great, but I hope that there is some kind of mechanism to offer it to business owners as well, should they wish to. I mean, we might run into an instance where the property owner themselves says, no interest, but yet you have the business owner saying, I just signed a five-year lease, and yes, I'd be more than willing to help out and contribute a portion.
Sure. So, it is the statute to create bids as a state law, and so, because it's tied to property assessment, it has to be the property owner that signs the agreement. That said, we have been connecting with the business owners early and often to see what they would like to see as a benefit from it, because sort of common pushback that happens with business owners, that they're afraid it's going to make their rent go up. But we've found a lot of support from the business owners, and some of them are actually advocating to their landlords to sign on. And what they will get from it is they'll get a staff person, like, they'll be an executive director of the bid, whose job it is to run all these programs and attend to their specific needs. So, a lot of them are really excited about that. So, the short answer is, no, the business owners cannot sign on unless they are also the property owner, but they have, the business owners thus far have been very positive about it, and they're, we're already talking about that there would be a renting business owner seat on the bid board of directors, so that they're always represented.
Oh, that's excellent. And as my colleague stated, more than willing to help in any way I can. I think this is, has great potential, and, and I know a lot of legwork is involved to get it to even where it is currently, and I thank you and your team, and I thank all the people that stepped up and formalized the, the board to get this really moving. So, thank you.
Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to also commend Ali for taking this initiative. I'm hoping that it will mobilize and get more property owners to get involved, especially when the business owner, Counselor Robinson touched upon, that they, they sign a lease, and in a situation the, the owner may not want to continue the lease because they have something else in mind, is that a way the city can, you know, be a mediator in, in helping to help business either continue to stay while they're looking for a new, a new venue, places, things like that?
Typically, the city won't, we won't insert ourselves in any landlord-tenant dispute. However, we always will help people find a new place to stay. Anyone who wants to come here or stay here, we, our office will always help. But for the bid, the, a bid board of directors could play a mediating role in that type of situation. That would be fine for that type of organization to step in.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Belanger.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Ali, one thing that comes to mind, you know, I was a downtown businessman for 15 years, from 2001 to 2016, so I know, I know their struggles, I know their challenges down there. And one of the most challenging things is parking. Okay? So, and this is something we need to work on, on our end as well. So, we need to be more parking-friendly on the weekends, okay? And by that, I mean, whenever you talk to somebody, I don't want to go downtown, where am I going to park? I've heard it over and over. I've seen it through my business, through my windows, cars circle once, twice, and then text, I'm out of here, I can't find anywhere to park. I've seen it. I've lived through it. So, I think the best solution there is what we need to do is open up these garage, the garages on weekends, Friday and Saturdays in particular, for consumers, but not only for consumers, for employees. So, you know, employees got to park on the street, tie up spots, owners and employees need somewhere to park as well. They're tying up valuable spots on the street, wherever they can park to get to work. You can't blame them where somebody looking to die and could be parking. So, I think what we need to do is work very closely with the manager's office and the parking department, open up the garages on weekends, no overnight, you know, but encourage employees, consumers, that it's open, it's free. Maybe part of the bid could subsidize some of that, and perhaps we could subsidize some of that. But I'd like to come to a middle ground. I think this definitely, definitely needs to happen. If we're going to do all this work, and we have nowhere to park, I don't know what we're going to accomplish. It may look a little better aesthetically, which will be great, but I don't know what we're going to accomplish in the, as far as rear ends and seats, if you know what I mean. Okay? That's the goal. That is the ultimate goal.
Right.
So, that's just my thought. I think that needs to happen. So, try and incorporate that into the plan as best you can. And please, again, give our thanks, gratitude to the steering committee for their work, and not only that, if they could, it seems to be going well, let's, let's expedite this. And what do they need on our end? As Counselor Robinson and all my colleagues alluded to, we're here to support whatever they need from us. So, I think it seems to be going. It's been a year and a half in the making, so let's see it get done, and please, let's emphasize that parking. I think that's very, very crucial. Thank you very much.
Counselor New.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, is that true, Ali, that we can start somewhere, we can start small, pick a portion of the downtown, and when that start, I mean, you have a director, as you said, directors will go out, expand it, or branch it elsewhere in the city? Is that correct?
So, you can start multiple bids in a city if you change the structure of an existing bid. So, let's say we set this up, and it's the boundaries I put in the map, but then it's like, oh, wait, let's also include the Hamilton Canal District. You would have to recirculate the whole thing, you'd have to redo, so it almost makes more sense to have a second bid for that district. And, yes, but you can have as many bids in a community as you, as long as they meet the state statute and people sign on, the property owners sign on, it's fine.
I see. I see. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'd like to also acknowledge that we've been joined by Counselor Scott. Thank you for being here, Counselor Scott. Anyone else have any other questions, or Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Just a quick question. Do you think down the line, if, if this bid really takes off, it will be another added marketing feature? When businesses are looking to open up in the downtown, you'll have a list of what landlords opted in, and so, it's kind of part of, say, a benefits package of, of working with one of the landlords in this, from a city standpoint, when people looking to start businesses contact your office? Will that, you think that will help?
I think so, absolutely. And that the bid themselves can also do that outreach and do that marketing, too, is really exciting. But yes, I think it's a tremendous benefit. Yeah.
All right. So, you know other questions? Thank you, Ms. Carter, for being here tonight and giving us this update. It's very exciting. I don't think we have any motions or anything we need to bring back to the full body, but